Welcome to the June 16th regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. If you can take a moment to silence your cellphone and then join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so I'll take role President Roush is here, Vice President McFarland.
Here.
Secretary Ringold will be just a couple of minutes late, she said. Treasurer Lotterbach is absent. Member Blasey?
Here.
Member Craig?
Here.
Member Horowitz?
Present.
Have a quorum. Item number two on our agenda is presentation or presentations to the board. Item number 2.1 for information, presentation of the 2526 General Operating Budget and Tax Rates. Anna.
Thank you, we're just going to get that pulled up here. Michigan Public Act 621 of 1978, the Uniform Budgeting Act requires all local governments to adopt balanced budgets, which can include funds from fund balance in a format specified by the state before July 1st of each year. It also requires that the local unit shall amend the General Appropriations Act as soon as it becomes apparent that a deviation from the original General Appropriations Act is necessary and the amount of the deviation can be determined. The final version of the 2425 budget will also occur this evening. Public school budget is not advisory nature, but rather an accounting of the source and uses of public funds. If either changes, the budget must be amended. Traditionally, our amendments happen in March and June. This timeline follows our previous traditions. We are combining the Truth and Budgeting and Taxation Hearing, the 2425 Amendment, and the 2526 Budget in the meeting this evening. So some disclaimers. As was the case the last several years, we do not yet have a final budget from the state. The governor and senate budgets were in at the time we locked in our predictions, so our estimates this evening represent our best guess based on the numbers expressed in each of those budgets. The amount of variance captured in the audit will impact our fund balance numbers. As just stated, our predictions were locked in on June 9th to prepare the board packet documents. A reminder that a 1% variance of this budget is approximately $1.14 million. So even though sometimes these numbers look large, in the grand scheme of our budget, 1% is a little over $1 million. And this budget does not include fund modifications. Looking at our millage rates for this coming year, we are looking at 18 mills on non-homestead. This allows us to collect our full foundation allowance. Our hold harmless millage, which raises $122 total per pupil, so the pupil count in taxable value play a big part in determining this rate, is done with a state calculation with some district input and is adjusted each year to reflect over or under collections from the previous years. Based on this calculation, we are showing it at .4016 mills on the homestead and qualified agricultural property. Our city taxes are split, so that will be .2008 in both summer and winter for that .4016 total. This is .0631 more than last year, as based on the calculation, there was an under collection last year. We are collecting 2.95 mills on all properties again for our bond, which again will be split 50/50 at 1.475 for both summer and winter. We'll ask you this evening to approve levying half of these rates on the summer tax roll for the city of Midland. Looking at some history of our hold harmless millage rate, you can see that it keeps on decreasing over time. The max collection that we've had at the origin was $415.31 per student. Our current max collection is at $122 per student. Right now, our .4016 millage will come out to approximately $900,000 of local revenue. And again, this rate increase slightly of .0631 versus last year's. Looking at some major revenue assumptions, we chose $392 per pupil foundation increase, bringing up our per pupil allowance to $10,122. That hold harmless is that net $122 per pupil. The $392 was chosen as it appeared to be the lowest between the governor and senate budgets. However, the senate budget was only slightly increased over this by an additional $25. So both were very close at the time that we had this information. The CREC points to the opportunity for this amount to be stable, based on what they are predicting in the state aid budget. And our enrollment estimate is based on our internal and external consultant projections as discussed in our budget workshop. We are predicting our enrollment to stay stable from our 2425 blend account at 7,400. Looking at our per pupil foundation revenue sources, the state restructure of hold harmless shifted more of that funding obligation to the state school aid fund in 2122 versus the local taxpayer. This was reflected in the lower hold harmless rate discussed on the previous slides. But you can see that since that point, we've kind of remained in that 29, high 28% of funding coming from local and the remainder coming from our state. So this year, showing at that $10,122 foundation allowance, we're showing 29%, .4% of that funding coming from local and the state making up the remainder. Looking at our enrollment trend, we have kind of migrated down, but as you can see, the last few years, we have stabled out. And as we discussed in detail of this during our budget workshop, we are predicting that stable enrollment for 2526. Looking at some of our major revenue assumptions in the categoricals, we increased our 31A budget to $4.1 million, based on our anticipated allocation and our estimated carryover. 23G, which was the Michigan Kids Back on Track, expired, so that was $750,000 removed from the budget compared to 2425. Our 31AA, which is the mental health supports, we budgeted at 75% of our current level, due to the uncertainty of what would happen with that categorical between the governor and the senate budget. Our title funding, Title 1A, 2A, 4A, we budgeted at 85% of our allocation this year, which was a decrease of about $790,000 within our budget. And we also showed our retirement offsets, those MIPSers funding decreasing by about 16%, which equated to about $1.3 million within the budget. Overall, we have approximately $107.6 million worth of revenue estimated in our budget, which is approximately a $3.3 million less than our June 25 budget amendment, which you will see later. Looking at our general fund revenue, coming in at about 107.6 million, the makeup of it is still very similar to 2425, with the largest part about 70.1% in the 2526 budget coming from state, 1.4% from federal, 19.4% from local property taxes, and the remainder making up that final 9%. Looking at the major expenditure assumptions, we continued the use of the Build Our Budget process this year for building and department expenditures, which reflected an increase of approximately 4% over the 2425 school year. As the future graph will show, this Build Our Budget part is about 16% of our total expenditures. The biggest increases we saw in this area were in curriculum, technology, and maintenance. Our salary increases for all employees were also in this expenditure assumptions, as well as step increases in lane movements. And we did see a 3% increase in our medical cost. The most impactful changes within all of here is our expenditures for personnel, which are 84.3% of expenditures related to personnel cost, once you have fringe benefits and everything else combined. We are showing our HSA contributions maintained at the current contractual levels. We still are maintaining our elevated level of staffing from Essar initiatives and benefited paraprofessionals. Our federal allocations for the title programs, as mentioned earlier, for the revenues are at 85% of our 2425 budget, with no carryover included at this time. Our retirement rates in our estimates were at 27% of payroll as a weighted average. And our staffing patterns do reflect a continuous process of evaluating our vacancies for replacements, reductions, or any additions as needed. Looking at our general fund expenditures by function, over three quarters, or 75%, are to classroom and student supports and instructional supports. Looking at expenditure changes, we are seeing overall approximately a 4% decrease in expenditures compared to our June amendment that we will present later this evening. Major changes within there is within that capital outlay area. A reminder that we did have a $4.1 million budgeted for the robotics center within our 2425 budget. You can see that significant decrease between 2425 and 2526 on this chart. Looking at our general fund snapshot, this chart compares our latest 2425 budget amendment that we will show later tonight and the proposed 2526 budget. At our full fund balance currently, we were showing for June to come in at 27.1%. We are predicting to have a shortfall of about 3.8 million in our budget for 2526, reducing our fund balance to 28.4 million or 25%. This is in line with what we have been preparing the board for, one of the reasons that we have acquired that healthy fund balance, knowing that we are trying to get it down to more realistic levels as our Essar funding is going away. These numbers are speculative and are subject to change based on July audit. We do like to budget conservatively. It's always better for me to come back to you guys and say, hey, we're doing better than we expected than the opposite, but there are always unknowns within our budgeting Looking at our fund balance history, again, you know, these numbers are speculative, will likely change to the better. They'll be modified once we know the final revenues and expenditures for this fiscal year, which will impact our 2526 budget as well. We've been fortunate to add to the fund balance in recent years, and a healthy fund balance is important for several key reasons. One, it prevents the need to borrow for cash flow purposes during the summer months to make our payroll. Two, it affords for opportunities to address needs and priorities such as student services instruction, employee compensation, capital projects, et cetera. Three, it assists in maintaining our programming during years with fiscal challenges. All of this is proving to come to fruition as we've been able to utilize our healthy fund balance to maintain increased staffing to address our student needs and our priorities. Again, with our full fund balance here, we are showing currently at a 27.1% to 25% drop between 2425 and 2526. The unassigned portion of that fund balance is going from 26% to 23.8%. Looking at our hypothetical foundation allowance, CPI versus actual. So there's been kind of throughout the years, as our inflation has increased, our foundation allowance has not kept up with it. We do maintain this chart to show that if the foundation allowance had kept up with CPI, we would be receiving about $4,165 more per student. Based on our estimated pupil count for next year, that'd be about $30.8 million more in revenue than in the 2526 school year of what we're predicting. This chart is tracking it since 1994, when Proposal A was passed, and that gap is based on our CPI prediction this year of 2.3%. As stated in the past, this budget is a consistently moving target. We need to be sure to invest our resources wisely for current needs, but always with an eye on the future to sustain the programs and services that make MPS a special place to learn. We will continue to work with the superintendent and the FFL committee as the processes progress and present this to you now, along with our 2425 budget amendment later this evening. Are there any additional questions?
I do want to highlight one thing in particular as we continue to think about how we shape our budget and address our students' needs. And that is, you know, if you go back to the graph that shows our general fund, remember in previous boards in the 2020 to 2024 cycle, we had Essar funds coming in from the federal government to help with learning loss and catching students back up. And we were very, very strategic as a board to make sure that we understood the needs of our students and how our staff was addressing those needs in a very thoughtful manner. Specifically, remember, we had five or six additions to our curriculum. And we did a lot of work in community engagement on exactly which of those programs benefited students the most. And we put this money away so that we put our fund balance away so that when the Essar funds dried up, we still had the funds available to pay for the additional expenses that we had brought on in service of our students. And I think we should be proud of the fact that we've done exactly that and been able to maintain our staffing levels for things like reading intervention specialists at each of our elementary schools and other services to make sure that we're getting kids back on track from any COVID learning loss. And I think we just need to keep this, the trajectory of our fund balance in mind as we go forward and not do anything drastic, which I don't think we are, but continue to figure out, you know, where do we want that to start leveling off in future years and continue to be able to provide those additional student supports as we go forward. I think the other thing that I wanted to mention, just so everybody's aware, I know at a minimum, at least Penny and I have been engaged with Representative Bill Schute on the House's version of the budget, as well as other legislators in Lansing. I've been really happy with his engagement and I know he personally came in and met with you Friday, Penny, as well as the other area superintendents. So we're addressing some of the needs or concerns that we have and helping to shape that legislation through his efforts. So thank you to him for that. And then finally, as we see the three versions come together, we're just going to have to stay engaged as a board to make any adjustments that come through, but would appreciate, you know, not only other board members, but also our public being engaged in that school funding process to make sure that we can address critical student needs as we go forward. Any other questions for Anna or comments? All right. For item 2.2, do we need to do anything differently on this one? Or is this just the approval of? Yeah, so that's just three as well, right? At this time, will have any requests to adjust the board specifically on the 2526 budget and tax rates, noting that there are two public hearings. I have two sets of lists on my sheet here, so Don Hinkle, you're for the next one. Renita, for the budget?
Good evening. Renita Bonnades, I had asked MPS through Facebook about a detailed budget. I was told the level of detail of the budget referenced on the MPS website is all that the board receives and approves. I see in the agenda packet, there is again only this high-level accounting of the budget. When I asked for a more detailed account level of the annual budget, I was told that there's a check register online where I could see all of those transactions. So I guess MPS has the position that the previous year's check registered is considered current information for the public, because the current link on the website is 202324. So the lack of financial transparency is an issue. After the bond proposal defeat, it would be clear that the public would like to see more real-time information. A few examples: the current budget in a more detailed breakdown, the current year's check registered, with a note that it may change with accounting and adjustments or corrections until the final audit, employee compensation for anyone with a total compensation over $100,000, not just those with wages exceeding $100,000, just to name a few. If this district is to regain the trust of this community, I would certainly hope that this board is willing to do much more to be open and transparent with the public on many topics. One good start would be to make the agenda packets for these board meetings available to the public at no charge. There was a button on the board website that said Agenda, and the other one said Agenda Packet. So apparently, at some point, they were available to the public. However, I do see that MPS is in the process of changing their website again, so I'm expecting this option to go away and only show the agenda option. That way, others will not know that it was ever an option. So I guess when almost a decade of board meeting agendas and meeting minutes disappeared about a year ago and never came back, that this was yet, will be yet another way to erase history with this new website update. This is all certainly not going in the direction of transparency with the public and building public trust in this board or school district. You were elected to represent the people of this community. Why wouldn't you want the people to be fully informed about what is going on? And expecting people to do a FOIA for this information just gives the board a reason to complain that they are getting so many FOIAs that the MPS staff can't do their jobs impacting the students, which we heard a while back. I guess putting more information online could save some of those FOIA requests. You can do better, and we look forward to you doing so. Thank you.
Joe? Bonnades?
Greetings. We are now in the board's lame duck session after the defeat of the May 6 mega bond. Even if the bond passed, you would not have funds until after the 2025 60-day summer construction season was over. So it would be good to hear about MPS meeting its fiduciary responsibility of maintaining the property which the taxpayers paid for, such that they had maximum long-term longevity viability. When the 2013 bond sinking fund failed, MPS floundered for two years and did almost nothing. Now with buildings another 10 years older, doing nothing will be even more expensive to recover from. You have inflated your fund balance up $20 million, done prior to COVID as well, above recommended minimums, thanks to income being more than expenses in recent years. Time to invest that money now that the 2015 bond money is gone, as well as the Essar funds from the government. Speaking of Essar funds, in April of 2022, when you were in the heyday of spending those funds, you were loading up on DEI, SEL, and other non-teaching roles. At that time, I asked, what are you going to do when the government turns off all that extra money? It was claimed that attrition would take care of it, except the roles you added can't teach chemistry or physics, math, or welding. You were able to divert many things to the 2015 bond and the Essar enabling funds. Time has run out, and it's time to think about what can be afforded, not what will make a few students or their parents more comfortable. Whatever happens, more transparency on how any future sinking fund or bond is spent will be required, and a defined plan which will require public discussion and not a pivot behind a curtain. There will be no blank checks.
I'm having a little hard time with the penmanship. Is it Josie or Joey? Joey. Welcome.
Thank you, Joey Stor. I had a situation today at work where I had worked hard on a budget, and then someone did a little Siegel management on me and came in with a bunch of questions that I had already worked on. And then this person showed up and decided to waste a bunch of my time. So I don't want to do that, but I do think, given what happened on May 6th, that you should consider the potential change in behavior, not from sort of public oversight, but public scrutiny. And so that helps you and the public, because you can say you shared, and it gives us nothing, no excuse, but to have to look at it. We are interested, and we see some line items that look a bit excessive, you know, based on what we know. We'd like to ask questions. So I think that would be a great dialogue between the public and the schools. If it was in the case, like Renita said, we had a chance, we looked for the budget in advance today so that we could have a chance to, you know, to absorb it. I think a nice job, it was beautifully presented, but really no time for scrutiny or understanding. So we have to have that, and I appreciate, considering that, in the future, I think it'll be great to improve our relations and understanding of each other. Thank you.
Thank you, Joey. Anybody else for the budget hearing? Seeing none, move on to the regular portion of our meeting, which is item four, the consent agenda. Penny, I think we wanted to make one change to the agenda that we could get approved.
I do.
No. I'll have another one.
Yep. Under item 2, 4.2, employee leave of absent request, that was a leave of request from Cassie Kramer. She today submitted a resignation letter. I called her to let her know that we had her leave request on the board agenda and that we would be removing that, knowing that her letter of resignation would come back to the board next month for approval. So I would ask you to please take action in removing item 2 from the consent agenda.
Hearing that, can I have a motion to remove item 4.2 from the consent agenda? Support. Motion by Ringold, support by McFarland. Any discussion on removing 4.2 from the consent agenda? All in favor of removing 4.2 from the consent agenda, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so the consent agenda now consists of item 4.1, approval of minutes from the May 19th 25 regular meeting, item 4.3, recommendations for hire of the below staff as listed in the agenda packet, item 4.4, teachers attaining tenure status for the 2526 school year as listed in your agenda packet, item 4.5, the below staff have announced their resignations effective on these dates, noting that the previous one mentioned in 4.2 will come in July, item 4.6, approval of the payment of the school systems bills for the month of April 2025 as listed in the check registers prepared by Ms. Holderby, in the amount of $8,656,435 is recommended, and the distribution of obligations by fund is included in the documentation. And finally, item 4.7, legal payments, approval is requested to authorize legal payments to the below list of professional legal fees as listed in your agenda packet. I have a motion for approving 4.1 and then 4.3 through 4.7.
I'll move for the approval of consent agenda items 4.1 through 4.7, noting that item 4.2 has been removed.
Motion by McFarland, support by Ringold. Any discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor of approving items 4.1 and then 4.3 through 4.7, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 5, Board of Education Matters Presentations to the Board, 5.1, Spotlight on Excellence, Woodcrest.
Well, they're joining us. I'll just share that we've made it through to the W's. Our schools have each had an opportunity. We do need to loop in the pre-primary center. And I feel like this has been well-received by the board to hear the short little seven-minute And I feel like this has been well received by the board to hear the short little seven-minute spotlight on excellence. So we will continue with this starting in August. And we're so happy Woodcrest is here.
Yes, thank you for having us.
If you want to shoot video, come all the way up to the front.
Oh, yeah. You can, you can stand behind us if it's easier or something. So today we have Ms. Brewer and Ms. LaCorte.
Yes, so thank you so much for having us. I'm Kaitlin Buer. I'm the principal at Woodcrest and I have Wendy LaCorte with me. Wendy is the PE teacher at Woodcrest Elementary. So I kind, I wanted to take this opportunity to highlight the physical education program at Woodcrest. And physical education is very important to me and to Woodcrest and across the district. But I really wanted to take this opportunity because Mrs. LaCorte goes above and beyond for physical education at Woodcrest. And so I could sit up here and I could talk probably for 20 minutes and Brian will give me the look. So I, I, I cut it down and we're going to highlight a few of the special programs that Mrs. LaCorte does above and beyond. And we will end our presentation talking about the jump rope club. And we have two students who are going to show you some of the skills they learned during, during jump rope club. So first, I want to introduce Mrs. LaCorte. Mrs. LaCorte is an SBSU alum. She's had 28 years at MPS, 17 at Woodcrest. She is the proud mom of two MPS grads, one MHS and one was at Dow. So she, she got both, both sides and she is really dedicated to Woodcrest and to the physical education program. And she also has played a mentor and has had a huge role in developing the curriculum, the K5 curriculum that all elementary PE teachers use at MPS. So I'm really grateful that Mrs. LaCorte, on her summer break, came to, to show off all of her talents. So what does PE look like at Woodcrest? PE, we have 50 total sections of PE at Woodcrest. That is broken up into two sections for 30 minutes per section. So every student at Woodcrest receives PE twice a week for 30 minutes. And the way that we break it up at Woodcrest is we have 3.5 does the morning section and K2 does the afternoon section. And that's important to understand because there is a huge difference between K2 PhysEd and 3.5. And this is something that Mrs. LaCorte really takes a lot of pride in and has done a lot of work across the district to make sure that our students get, they get the basis in K2 and then they're able to develop their skills 3.5. So she's actually going to explain what our focus is, the K2 focus compared to the 3.5 focus.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank Caitlin for giving me this opportunity to come in and brag about some of my, my favorite, or some of my products over here and what we do in gym. It's more than just playing games. It's, we learn, we learn through play for sure. The K2 focus is a gross motor development focus. We do running and skipping and galloping, hopping and jumping. And then as they, it get older, Kate, you know, move up closer to second grade, then we start crossing the midline with our gross motor development. And it's, safety is huge, huge, and especially in kindergarten. They come in, they are a blank canvas and we have, we start right from the very, very, very first day about how we have to be safe in the gym. And we are a big proponent of social skills as well. One thing I've learned in my, I've been teaching for 33 years, is that kindergarten are the most competitive group. And when you realize that, then you can use that to your advantage as, as a gym teacher. But they are the most competitive and, but in their very, the, the growth from that first day to the last day of kindergarten and then from that first day in kindergarten to the last day in fifth grade is, it's, unique to our, your auxiliaries. We get to watch them grow up. I always tell them, I remember when you came in with a tiny voice and, and here they are heading off to middle school. So it is a very, it's one of my most favorite things about what, what I do in the gym. Anyway, so then once we go from that, that gross motor and social skills and safety and all of those things, it progresses up into third grade. And then we start working on team sports, lead-up activities. And we get into some of the other fun, you know, the, which we're going to talk about, but some of the other opportunities they have once they get into that upper L, those three, third, fourth, and fifth grades. And for Woodcrest, my, you know, I'm sure you've heard this before from teachers, there's just not enough time. And so my priorities in the third, fourth, and fifth grade team sport curriculum is to give them opportunities to play team sports that are not easily accessible. So they can go outside every day and play basketball and they can go outside every day and play soccer and they can throw football. They can do that every single day at recess, but what they can't do is floor hockey and they can't do volleyball. And, you know, one of our favorite MPS innovations, something that was created here in Midland was the paddleton, which if you are a student, have come through, you know what paddleton is. And also, I want to also recommend, one of the cool things that we also have is huge community partners. We get the best of the best. We have Jill Stottlemyre who comes in right from kindergarten all the way up till they're in fifth grade and, and teaches them lacrosse. I, I did not play lacrosse, so it's amazing to have him come in. He is awesome. We have the tennis center who comes in every year, again, K through five, and they teach our kids where they're learning from the best that our community has to offer. And then Northern Lanes, about 10 years ago, bought two full classroom sets of bowling kits. That includes mats, balls, pins. They actually deliver them to each of our buildings. We were a part of a bowling 101 curriculum, which only elevated our bowling game at the, at the elementary and honestly, all, all across Midland County. They, it's open to everyone. And so without these awesome community partners, I mean, they're, they help us elevate our, our game, okay? At Woodcrest and honestly, all of the, all of the schools.
So you can hear Wendy's passion, right? Like that is, oh, don't sit down yet. So I chose Wendy and I wanted to highlight this. I've been fortunate to work in five other elementary buildings outside of Midland Public and I've never come across a PE teacher who is so passionate and really works hard. She devotes her time to make sure that our kids are exposed to a lot of different sports. So beyond the classroom, Mrs. LaCorte also offers a lot of extra activities for our students. It starts in the fall. We have the Fun Run, which is actually offered to all of our students at MPS. And last year, we had over 350 students participate in the Fun Run. And all of our physical education teachers, they come together, they do a cross-country track at, which park was it?
Well, usually we do it at Strattles, but they were under construction. So last year was the first year we did it at Plymouth Park.
Yeah, it was at Plymouth Park, yes. And it is a one-mile run for the students and we pump those students up for three weeks prior to this run. And it is really cool to see the community come together and participate in this Fun Run. At Woodcrest, we also have the Pumpkin Patch, which those of you that have been at MPS for a while, you know, this is also an MPS tradition. This, this leads up to Halloween and Mrs. LaCorte spends an entire weekend setting up these obstacle courses that the kids, they have to go through for the entire week. She includes a story where they have like a mission and they won't be able to find out the ending until they are through the whole Pumpkin Patch. So, and kids, again, anybody from Woodcrest will know, like, oh, I can't wait to hear Mrs. LaCorte's Pumpkin Patch story. So it really just brings the passion into the physical education that we have at Woodcrest. Now, we also, this year, Mrs. LaCorte, pickleball, everybody is hearing about pickleball. And Mrs. LaCorte came to me and she said, you know, I think I need to teach the kids how to play pickleball. And I was like, yeah, let's do it. Again, you can just see, like, just giving kids access to those other sports outside of the classroom. She did this on her own time during her lunch. She got the nets, she got the ball, the paddles and the balls, and she taught the kids the rules of paddle, pickleball, and it was a hit. And the kids are asking like, can we do it again? Can we do it again? So hopefully, you know, I'm pretty competitive, so we'll probably have a staff competition of pickleball as well. So it was, it was a great experience for our students at Woodcrest. Field Day, I just want to highlight Field Day. Most of the schools, their PTO has taken over Field Day and it's run by parent volunteers. Mrs. LaCorte still does every activity of our Field Day. Again, spends the entire weekend setting, setting all the activities up. It is different from K2 than 3.5, which is a logistical, I call them, like, you are a unicorn when it comes to Field Day. She could write a book on how to make sure that Field Day is an effective activity for your school. So this is the spring highlight of, at Woodcrest is the Field Day. And we do have a lot of parents who help coordinate every, every activity at Field Day. The next thing that Mrs. LaCorte does, and I'm going to have her talk about this, she also has our fitness awards.
So I'm sure, a lot of us that came up through schools are probably familiar with the Presidential Fitness Award Program. Well, they ended that program in 2013 and they were trying to have the schools kind of go over to this fitness gram, a program, which at the time, with the leadership, they felt that they might not be able to support this tech, with the technology. And it was going to cost money. And so the coordinator at the time came to the elementary PE group and said, is there any way that you could create or come up with a fitness testing program? And we said, yes. So we developed, it's called, this is, again, unique to Midland Public Schools. It is a play on Midland Public Schools, but the M stands for maximum performance, the P stands for power performance, and the S stands for sustain. But it is a play on MPS, yes. And it is a fitness program. We start it in kindergarten and again, the blank canvas, they, they, they go through these tests, they have never done this before. But the buy-in is so huge because they have not ever done this before and they had no idea that they could do these things. And so at, at the kindergarten level, and then as they get older, all the way up to fifth grade, then we start to introduce goal-setting in third, third, fourth, and fifth grade based on the fitness testing. And the tests are an endurance run, which is a mile for fourth and fifth, a half mile for second and third, and a quarter mile for K1. And then we have the pull-ups and the flex-arm hang, upper body. We also have some awards that we do. We have a pull-up powerhouse and a 60-second club based on those tests as well. And we also use the times from the Fun Run. So it's like, we're, you know, we're using all, all of the things that we can to keep us, keep us efficient with the, with the data collection. We also do an agility run, flexibility test, and then curl-ups. And based on those tests, then they can earn, earn awards. And again, we start it right away in kindergarten and these guys are very familiar, we do it every year. And, and it is a, it's a district program.
And there is huge student buy-in. It's really, it's fun to go in and see, you know, kindergartners, they can do their hang for, what, 30 seconds maybe?
We've had some 60 seconds.
Yeah, and then you go and you can see the fifth graders and they, how they've developed and they are so proud. And they'll ask, you know, in education, we're driven by data and there is a lot of data tracking happening in our physical education programs. And they will ask, oh, wow, I was this in kindergarten and now I'm this as a fifth grader. So the progress is really great to see and influence.
One of the things that's unique is that it is six years of data that they get if they've been with me from kindergarten all the way through fifth. And it is their data. It is unique to them and that's the unique, again, I feel a unique aspect of what we do in, in the physical education.
So like I said, you can hear her passion. And one of our above and beyond, after, before-school activities that we have at Woodcrest is our Jump Rope Club. And we have two of our jumpers here today. I'm just going to have you just give a brief, how many students we have and how long you've been doing Jump Rope Club.
Well, I inherited the program from Sherry Hartley, who had actually started the program at Woodcrest. So I've, I had done it all 17 years I've been there, except for the two that we had to take off for COVID. And we used to do performances and some, some people may remember, but with, when COVID hit, we lost some of our older kids and lost our skills. So we're in the develop, we're back to developing. And these two young ladies that I've brought in tonight are fifth-grade graduates of Woodcrest, newly, newly graduates, and they have been through the last three, the last three years as our startup back with their jump rope. So I, do you want me to?
Yeah, do you want them to come up here? And you have to know that the Jump Rope Club, when, when Mrs. LaCorte has me make the announcement for Jump Rope Club, it is like kids are like sprinting to the gym to sign up for it. It is, they are so excited to be part of this like culture of students and with Mrs. LaCorte and they give up their own time, they get up earlier to come, so.
And parents.
Yes, and parents. So it's a great activity that we have at Woodcrest. So a couple of our jumpers are going to show their skills.
Yeah, I, I told them to go right up here where most ceiling height, space here. This is Sophia. You want to say hello? And this is Bailey. And we are very thankful that they were able to come in on their summer vacation also to come in and just to show off some of the things that they've learned. Again, they started back, we, we started back up when they were in third grade, so they've been doing it for the last three years with us. So we're going to start out with a basic, rather than just a jump, then the first trick that we go to is a side straddle. So they're going to just demonstrate that for you. Go ahead. Yep. It's going to be a little bit close quarters, very good. All right, and then we're going to do a side swing cross. All right, and then we're going to do a front, or just a front cross. There you go. Very good. No, poor Bailey. And then we have, those would be considered what we, we have 16 basic skills and those would be a few, just a handful from the basic skills. And then the way the program is set up is you pass those 16 skills and you move up to the intermediate level, which we call the blue level. And so then these are some, we have a fling that would be one of our blue level tricks. So it's going to be, it's a toe touch, a toe touch, and then a heel. And then we, we have other, we have other ones, but these girls are a little rusty. They just said, they, you know, they, they just wanted to stop it there. Now, Sophia has gone on up into the green level, so this is our advanced level. So she passed all 11 of our intermediate skills and we have 11 partner skills within that. And she's going to show off a heel click. So she's going to jump and put her heels in the air.
Wow.
Good job, Sophia.
She hasn't jumped for a few months, so this is really impressive. I will tell you, this is one thing I've learned. These guys make this look so easy. And they spend a lot more time than the time we offer in Jump Rope Club. They are jumping at recess, they're jumping at home, I'm sure, everywhere. Their moms are here. And then Sophia wants to show you her double under. I don't know, she's going to, we'll see if she can, she's got to jump a little bit higher so we hope the ceiling will hold up for this one.
Whoa.
So she's jumping the rope two times each turn. And then lastly, good job, Sophia.
Good job, Sophia.
They're going to just, we just, we just put this together. These two were not partners in the Jump Rope Club, but they're going to do two of our basic jump partner tricks. So is this one, first, first one is just called two-in-one side-by-side. And then from there, we can develop other, other skills. So come up just.
Good job.
We're going to give them one more chance, one more chance, that we work this out out there.
Good job.
And thank you, girls, so much for coming in the summer, out on your summer vacation.
Yes, thank you, guys. Any questions for us, board members?
What do you look for when you're picking out a jump rope?
Um, it's a huge size because they're all different sizes. They're ever really big.
Would it be like a heavy one or?
Um, well, they're all pretty small.
Can you, can you tell her why you picked the red ones for double unders over a green one for the, the green handle for the other?
Um, for a double under, they're actually red because when you're, we have to put them around the house. So the smaller ones better.
It's science.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say, girls, that was amazing. As someone who understands that the use of your knees does not remain the same in elementary school through adulthood, I'm envious of. school through adulthood, I'm envious of what you guys were able to do, and that's really great. Thanks for coming to show us that.
Mrs. LaCourte, I have a question for you. What do you think is the most important skill that you, that, that the students that you, that leave Woodcrest after having you take with them?
What's the most important skill that they take with them? Sure. I'm sorry. Well, I, I hope that one of the skills is just an appreciation for movement and have, that it's fun. That, that's my goal, no matter what it is. When they come in, I always say, now, some things you're going to love, and some things you're not. And some of those things you love, somebody else doesn't like. And some of the things you don't like, somebody else might love. So I hope that we give them enough experiences throughout that six years that they find those things that they love. And like pickleball this year, first year doing it, doing it at lunch, it was an eat-and-play because I, I teach during their recess, and I just took one class and just kind of tried it because I didn't know the rules either. So we all learned together, and I would have done it every day if I could, because we had so much fun. It was very fun. So, and hoping, hoping to give them those kinds of skills. And they got to see what it ta, you know, to pilot something, to start from the very beginning. Like, we did not know the rules. We figured it out together, so.
I'm very impressed about the presidential patch.
Yeah.
We had three boys go through MPS, and they were very competitive. And the last one graduated in 2012, so they could have never stopped up before me.
Nope, and that when he, he got in. What we do is a wristband now, because it is our program. So there, there is no more of the patches and the certificates. We have certificates and.
And the drawing.
It is. It's the same sort of thing.
Yes, it is.
And it's interesting is the kindergarten, first, second grade have more sustained, because they're just learning this, this, the tests and all of that. And when they start setting goals, then we have more, they have migrates up to the max and the power. And so it's, it is a motivating thing. And like I said, we start that from the beginning. But yes, I hope I answered your question.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
So Anna, I don't know if you could have had a worse lead-in, but.
I will definitely not be jump roping tonight.
Go from jump roping back to budget. So, item 5.2 is for action, 2425 final budget amendment. Anna.
And we're just going to give a second for that to be brought up. All right. For our 2425 final budget amendment, just a reminder of where we are at. Tonight, we are doing the approval of the final 2425 budget amendment, as well as the adoption of the 2526 budget, as was stated in the earlier presentation. Looking into our disclaimers for this, the amount of variance captured in the audit will impact our final fund balance numbers. Our predictions were locked in for this budget amendment on June 9th to prepare our board packet documents. Again, looking at a 1% variance based on this budget is approximately $1.19 million. And this amendment does include fund modifications. We have assigned fund balance transfers for future technology and bus purchases. We've set aside $250,000 for technology, breaking our total set aside at this point to $2 million. For bus replacement, we have $200,000 set aside, bringing our total to a million. Previously, we have set aside money for copier replacements. However, we have reached a million-dollar threshold there and have decided to stop contributing towards that amount. Looking at our second and final budget amendment for the year here, it represents our numbers, as I said, of June 9th, which was our cutoff to be able to get the board packet prepared for you. So there will likely be some additional variance than what you see here. And again, the final fund balance will change once the audit is complete. We are seeing an increase in revenues by about $4.2 million, primarily due to the revenue from the sale of the Eastland property, grants such as Filter First and Stronger Connections, and increased 147 categoricals to offset MIPS' costs. There's also an increase in expenditures of approximately $2.2 million, most notably due to 147G expenditures. We had money come in from the state that had to be paid out to employees. We had to record both the revenue and the expenditures within our budget for that. That was the pass-through of the 3% retirement reimbursement that some of our employees received based on their retirement category. In terms of major adjustments, there's nothing of major impact since the March amendment. However, we would like to remind the board at this time that we did budget for the $4.1 million of the robotics center. That amount continues to be reflected in this final budget amendment. We will have some areas within here of our GASB96, which is our software accruals, our lease accruals for things like the robotics facilities we are currently using, zero eyes, things of that nature. Looking at our final total fund balance, we are showing a prediction of 27.1% or approximately $32.2 million. Are there any questions for the 2425 final budget amendment?
Any questions from board? Clear. Thank you. Do we have a motion for item 5.2?
Move to approve the 2024-25 final budget amendment as presented.
Support. Motion by Ringold, support by McFarland. Any further discussion or questions? This, we'll do a roll call vote for the item 5.2. Jen?
President Roush.
Yes.
Vice President McFarland.
Yes.
Secretary Ringold is a yes. Member Blazy.
Yes.
Member Craig?
Yes.
And Member Horowitz.
Motion carries 6-0. Item 5.3 for action, the approval of the 2526 general operating budget. Anna.
So I will save you from going through that entire presentation again, but this is now the official action that we have gone through our truth and budget and taxation hearing, and we've offered the opportunity for the public to comment. It's time at, this time for the board to be able to take action on adopting the 2526 general operating budget.
Is there a motion for item 5.3?
I will move to approve the 2526 general operating budget.
Motion by McFarland, support by Ringold. Any further discussion or questions for the 2526 budget? We will also do a roll call vote for this one. Jen?
President Roush.
Yes.
Vice President McFarland.
Yes.
Secretary Ringold is a yes. Member Blazy.
Yes.
Member Craig?
Yes.
Member Horowitz, yes. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Item 5.4 for action, Michigan High School Athletic Association Membership Resolution. Penny.
Yes, we have for-year action tonight, a resolution for our membership into the organization. It is similar to previous years for both Dow High and Midland High, as well as our middle schools.
Is there a motion to approve item 5.4?
Move that we approve the Michigan High School Athletic Association Membership Resolution.
Motion by Craig?
Support?
Support by Ringold. Any further discussion on item 5.4? All in favor of approve?
Nope.
All in favor of approving item 5.4, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 5.5, Facility Improvement Bond Proposal Update. As I, as I had discussed last meeting, I told you that we work with Penny offline and come back with the next steps. Do want to start by acknowledging again the, the outcome of the election, and I think clearly we need to listen to our community's feedback. And I think a lot of us have been doing that out in the community, as well as through official communications. If you still have more feedback, if you haven't been able to provide feedback yet, please reach out and do so. I've engaged with a couple people through email, a lot of people out in the community. So please get ahold of us through our board website, through Penny, through, through any means necessary to make sure that we can engage in, in a healthy discussion. You know, as, as Penny and I worked through the next steps, I think one of the reflections that we had was the need and, and recognition of really the need for comprehensive engagement from our community, and how best to do so. What we would like to suggest to the board is really to use some time for strategic planning. You know, we, the only reason we have buildings and assets is to produce student outcomes. And if, I think both of us feel that this is a time to take a step back and make sure we are aligned with the community on the intended outcomes of our students first and foremost. And then make sure that our buildings fit those stated outcomes and objectives for our kiddos. You know, our students come first, and making sure that our parents and families of those students and the students themselves feel engaged in the process is the most important thing. So how we articulate those outcomes, I think, is the product of, of that rich community feedback. And then we can make sure that any plans that we have for facilities fit around those outcomes. And that the, the student themselves is always driving any need for facility improvements. To that end, Penny and I have started the process to engage outside help from a professional facilitator. And we'll come back to the board for recommendations on, on those next steps, to engage that, that professional that can really help us. I think it's important to have someone that can help steer that process, to make sure that it's independent, and bring the, the community together, helping us along the way. You know, at, at this time, I don't think I'm comfortable suggesting that we immediately go back to the community for any sort of a sinking fund or facility bond improvement. You know, Penny and I did spend a little bit of time looking at the timelines that would be required, for example, to get something on the November ballot. We would have to have any application completed middle of August, August 10th, so beginning of August. That just felt way too fast to, to really do our community a, a service in, in that engagement process. So I think our, I've articulated our next steps, and to be precise about it, it's like coming back with a proposal for what does that engagement process with help of an outside facilitator really look like as next steps, and, and lay out that, that plan to get us to that more strategic planning. Penny, what would you add?
Very little. That was a good summary. I know that there are some community members who have expressed concerns about lack of, of trust in what we're doing. I do not believe that represents the majority of our community, but I do believe that an intentional community collaboration strategic planning process is one way for us to really reconnect with all members of our community, including those who didn't choose to vote in May. And to your point, getting really clear about what our student outcomes are, not just academically, but otherwise, will help guide a lot of our decision-making, financially, staffing, and facilities. So I look forward to developing a strategic plan that is collaborative and can guide our work for the next several years.
Well, thank you. I will open it up to floor here on, for our board members to, how do we improve this plan? How do we improve the next steps? What questions would you have? What are your concerns?
Well, we have to see what the strategic plan is before we can.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But just immediate next steps, yes.
I, I'm looking forward to this process, to really drill down with the community and with the consultant, consultants, whomever we, we come up with, to look forward. And maybe this, you know, I, I see this as a blessing in disguise, to go back and, and maybe do things differently, if that's where we, if that's where we land, and, and really, really, really drill down and evaluate what the needs of this district are. And it's going to come with a price tag, so no sticker shock there, but it has to be done. And let's go back and, and really take the time to do it right, rather than, I like the idea of doing that, rather than rushing back in November and, and doing, I think, a disservice to the community, who obviously wants engagement and wants input, and wants to have their hands in this process as much as anybody else. Rushing to get this something done in November isn't going to serve that end. So taking our time and doing it right is, is the way to go.
I would encourage us, as we are seeking this individual, to help us to find somebody who is actually skilled in engaging the community. I think we made a valiant, valiant effort to engage the community. I think we engaged a very small, very vocal part of the community, and it did not represent the whole. So I think that that is a key aspect of, or key strength of whomever we are, we are seeking. Because otherwise, it's not going to be a great value to us if we don't engage the right folks. We'll end up in the exact same place again, just with a nice strategic plan.
And I, I agree with what trustee Horowitz said about the effort that were taken to engage the community. Significant effort was taken to engage the community. And I, well, I agree also that obviously, you know, well, I shouldn't say obviously. I don't think that it's obvious. I, I think that one thing that we do have to give credit to as well is that individuals were voting on factors that may not have looked the same a year ago, two years ago, when they're thinking about their personal finances. There may, you know, we, we've heard from the group that just doesn't have trust in the district. But there, so this potentially group who just could not vote for more taxes at this point, looking at their personal finances. There may be other reasons that people voted no that have nothing to do with the work that we're doing, but everything to do with what they're experiencing, and their perception of what they're experiencing financially. And so I, I do agree that putting in the same amount of effort that we did before, I think, is warranted. But also figuring out how we align that effort to represent the full community, but also to recognize that we cannot predict how people will feel about their finances this November, next November, at any election. And how do we, understanding that there is always going to be that level of unknown, how do we account for that? How do we plan around that? So I, I am open and interested in the, the process that helps us to tackle those, those factors, or better understand those factors.
I agree. I think the, the other piece that the strategic planning is really going to be helpful for, for us is, is being able to support the conversations around the fact that we need to make big changes. And big change is hard. And so the idea of what does it look like to have a more in-depth conversation about why those changes are happening? why those changes are happening and have the community buy-in for those changes, rather than just saying, hey, here's this big thing. And so I think that, I think that's another piece of the skill set that we need to be looking for, is that change management strategy.
Can I also, just one other comment? I understand that you've been chatting with a potential person or firm for the strategic planning. I hope when we talk more about it that we have maybe a couple of options of folks that you've chatted with, just so that we can compare and select from multiple good options.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? So I think we'll keep this topic on the board agenda for quite a while. I think, just to round this out, you know, while our needs don't go away from a facility standpoint, please know we have safe buildings, safe places for students to learn. And one of the reasons that we have a fund balance and have saved our pennies over the last 15 years is to make sure that we can spend when the need arises. Something arises, like it did last year with the brand-new boiler at Dow High when it failed, you know, we have the bank account to do that. Item six, request to address the board for the general session. Don Hinkle.
My name's Don Hinkle. I live at 309 Mording Meadow Way here in Midland. I would like to comment about Ms. Craig's comments from last month, specifically where she talked about, for those of us that voted no, what would it take for us to vote yes? And I have to admit, she stumped me because I couldn't think of it. And if I knew her better, I would say darned you, because I have spent hours on this. I've had nights where I went to bed thinking on this, and I woke up in the morning thinking about this, okay? So I have four comments about her comments. First, I thought they were incredibly wise and insightful, and as such, they're worthy to be repeated frequently, if not monthly, or however often she wants to say it, because I was stumped, okay? She hit the nail right on the head. Second, in a real way, she may have framed future discussions on bond issues, because as you saw, there's a large group that said, no, we have to switch that if we're going to, how's that going to happen? Three, for me, this is a two-way street. So what do I, I voted no, what do I need to see changed so that I can vote yes? And as you as the board, what are you able to change so that I can vote yes? And in a way that may almost be sort of hinted at tonight, almost like a self-autopsy. What happened? What do we do so that this doesn't happen again? And my fourth item is, to me, and these are all about me, it's my opinion that if the same or similar bond issue goes up again, it will get voted down again. And that's not going to get us anywhere. So in conclusion, Ms. Craig, I thank you for your incredibly wise and insightful comments, and thank you that you had the courage to say them in the first place. Thank you very much.
I would be interested in details about what it would take to get you to yes. Mr. Bonides.
General comments. Thanks to my internet searches and the wonderful world of algorithms running throughout the internet, I've been shown a lot of school board stuff from locally as well as nationally, and it's amazing how similar things are. So some of the trends that I've seen in these references include, number one, new and shiny school buildings instead of keeping old buildings will help students learn. It's been seen across the country, not found to be true. Illustration is our Central Park Elementary. Two, school board meetings have gotten very long across the whole country, which is not good for public participation. I remember back when this was a business meeting and took less than an hour. Three, big school bonds pass at a much lower percentage rate than they did in the past. The only one, other one, we were the biggest one in the state. The second biggest one in the state did pass, but that one was on the heels of an expiring bond, and so their net mileage didn't change. So their total taxes didn't go up. So it's not just what are we doing today, it's how does it fit in the balance of everything else going on, which is why I'd mentioned previously the idea of a bond, on a bond before it expires, on a bond before it expires, that type of thing. Anyway, so there's just a few of the things that are going on everywhere. We're not unique, and they haven't figured out how to do it either. Thank you.
That was everybody that I had sign up ahead of time. Anybody else that would like to address the board this time?
I'm concerned about the state of the Northeast Junior High. When you had us tour it, there were leaks in the roof, and the home ec class couldn't plug in the microwaves at a certain time because things were exploding. Is that going to be remedied? I mean, if we're talking about another year, and you say our places are safe, to me, that's not safe. And the kids are impacted by buckets sitting in their classrooms. I was impacted by it. I was appalled that we haven't taken care of that building enough that it's, I consider safe. And my granddaughter's going to be going there, so let's fix it. And I know it's a project, and I know it has to be done during the summer, but there's got to be a way that we can make this happen. Thank you.
I'm trying to collect my thoughts, because at the end of the day, we opened the building to show the warts. We explained that we constantly do maintenance on these buildings. It's part of our budget. At some point, the roof becomes all patches. We patch the building every year. One of the things that the district has to have are capital funds to keep the water We are more than happy to show you what we spend on maintenance. We talk about it constantly. And one of the points of opportunity for our district is a building that is costing us a lot to maintain. And furthermore, we have an engineering study, an output from the firm that we hired that showed it was cheaper for the taxpayer to replace the building than to repair it. Who are you next?
Artie Lamas, 5994 North Swede Road, Midland, Michigan, 48642. Trying to move on here with this bond thing, there was a mailing that was sent out that stated that there was misinformation put out by the vote no people. And this is a quote from Scott McFarland, "The effort that they are putting into misinformation is laughable. In the name of transparency and accuracy, the public wants to know more about that statement." I understand that you don't engage in this type of a forum, so I look forward to hearing from you. Penny has my contact information. And then another side note, if we're going to start talking about a committee or whatever you're going to, how you're going to get your information from the public, I urge you to remember that there was an 11-month study on closing four schools that abruptly led to closing five with no study. This district has been overcrowded ever since that happened. When you listen, you must also comprehend. Thank you.
Margie, do you have this mailer?
Um, I don't have a mailer.
Does anybody have a mailer? I don't know of anything that the district-
I went through your website and found, but I didn't find any information. And I couldn't find any of those.
I am not aware of any mailer that would have come from the district that would have accused anybody of anything.
Okay, so-
So if you can produce this mailer, I'd be all ears, right?
I'll retract the mailers. I don't have it with me. And like I said, I went to your website and found where you were, I was finding people with informational, but I couldn't find any of that information. But there is a quote from Scott McFarland-
Does Scott have a free speech right? Or, okay?
He does. There's information out there. I think, you know, I'm trying to make-
Whenever he says something out in the public, the only way that this board speaks is through the actions of this business meeting.
So are you saying, like, disregard that statement?
I don't know what he said. I'm not going to play cop of the Facebook comment section, if that's what you're referring to.
I'm trying to be engaged in that, but you know it.
Hey.
Is that what we do, is just act like-
No, I'm just trying to make sure that I've got the accurate information. So if there was a mailer, I would like to see it.
Okay, I will look to see if, like I said, you do, um, whenever all those invites to the public forums.
I'm sorry?
Whenever you have a public forum, we would get an invite. Was that all only by mail, or was that on the internet?
Oh, the public meetings, we put them on social media.
Yeah.
Some were a media release, and we did have those on our website to invite the community to those public meetings.
They're also in the Midland Daily News on a weekly basis.
We can go back and look at those if need be.
But I went back through the looks of the invite list, I tried to go through each one of them, but I couldn't find them.
Would anybody else like to address the board at this time?
Hi, my name's Deb Labor. Every time I've tried to address this board in the past, I've just mumbled. So I figured I'm winging it tonight. So anyways, guys, much to your goodness of heart, you've inherited, for lack of better terms, some of the sins of the past board, in the sense when the 2015 bond was passed, it was supposed to replace the roof, replace the HVAC of Northeast. It didn't happen, and so I agree, Northeast has got some serious, serious problems. But then that factor of distrust comes in, and it's like, well, I thought we passed a bond to get those issues fixed, and it didn't happen. So that's one aspect of, you've inherited some distrust. And I love the idea of strategic planning, but we did that before, and I think you guys are all very intelligent, very logical. We've got good, logical, intelligent people in our community that would be willing to come alongside. I think some of the big issues in terms of the next bond passing is, you put up, I think, 30% of the school population is 31A. Well, those 31A families are the ones that are going to have to pay this bond, and that's not insignificant. And yet, we have a lot of two-income families in Midland. We have stratified income levels in our community, stratified the ones with two incomes. We need new schools, because my traveling child goes to Grand Blanc. They got cool locker rooms and a cool field, and then they come here and we're embarrassed. I understand that, but we have 31A families trying to support this. And so I think we can come to agreement, but the other thing is, what percentage of our community really wants preschool in our elementary? I don't doubt there's a good segment of our population that says, hey, that'd be great. I can't afford preschool. But then you have to look at all the businesses that have preschool, Montessori's. Those are people that, those are jobs that are going to be eliminated if we bring preschool into the elementary schools. So these are the factors I think you just need to think about when you look at our community and how it's stratified. Did I get it all? And the only other thing in terms of trust is, you guys, we talked about the budgets, and you voted on it, and then you voted on something else. And, no offense, but I had no idea what you were voting on. It wasn't in our packet. It's like you could have all voted for a pay raise. Not that you did that, I know you didn't do that, but it's like, I had no idea what you voted on. It was something physical. And so again, just in the aspect of being transparent, it'd be nice to know, what are you guys voting on? Thank you.
Can I just make one clarifying comment? Just because I've seen stuff on social media, we do not get paid. Okay.
That's why I use that as an example, because I know you guys do not get paid. But it didn't crack a smile on any of you, so I'm sorry, it was a bad joke.
Deb, help me with, what did we vote on that you didn't-
Right after we budgeted, it was the preschool. I looked at the-
No, we removed an item from the consent agenda.
Right after we budgeted, it was the high school athletic competition.
Oh, it's just our membership in the MHSAA.
To compete in state athletics.
Okay, so it was on, I'm sorry. I was on the wrong page. My error.
Two, so two other things. Deb, thank you for, you are correct, none of us were around in the 2015 bond. If there are specific projects that were not completed, I would like to know about it, because I am not aware of specific projects that were not completed.
That was the one I was most aware of, is that that was supposed to be part of the 2015. And I think the other aspect that has created, and again, these are things you've inherited, not you, is that we had all those elementary schools that we, old folks like us, like, we just tore down all those elementary, you don't know how many times we've heard that. We just tore down a whole bunch of elementary schools and now we want to build a new one. So that's a bit of a love, too. And I'm way past my three minutes.
I think, that's okay. Deb, I think the other thing that I just want, and thank you for bringing it up, the preschool, I am not in the, I don't think anybody on this board intends to put anybody out of business. One of the things that we have is, we have identified as a board that we want to affect third-grade reading scores. If a student comes to us in kindergarten or in first grade, since kindergarten is not compulsory in the state, and doesn't know their letters or numbers, they're starting way behind a kid that went to a high caliber preschool. What we need to address as a district is 30% of our kiddos don't go to preschool. So they're starting at a deficit. We're trying to address that 30% of the kiddos to make sure that they have a high caliber preschool opportunity, and we're trying to be that district that takes those kiddos in and make sure that they have the opportunities to learn and thrive at an earlier age so that we can change their trajectory over time. Anybody else like to address the board? Okay. Move on to item seven, which is curriculum instruction and assessment. I think we have meeting notes from May 19th.
I have meeting minutes from the last time that the Curriculum Instruction Assessment and Study Committee met on May 19th. Members present were myself, Brad Blazy, Mekki Craig, Ken Weaver, Penny Miller Nelson, and guests were Amanda Tomes, Kevin Dodick, and Andrea Josbyak. We met at Midland High, and the first part of the presentation was Amanda Tomes presenting on the HH Dow High Orchestra and Choir trip that was to, international trip to Prague and Prague, sorry, and Czechoslovakia. And then we left Midland- trip to Prague and Prague, sorry, and Czechoslovakia. And then we left Midland High and went to visit, um, the Building Trades House where Kevin Dotick hosted us there. Um, in, they, they worked with Habitat for Humanity to build the Building Trades class this year, the house this year. So we got to see the almost finished product. And the meeting adjourned at 2:45.
I'm jealous because that is always the coolest trip of the year. And to see how those kids, the kids are so proud of the house that they built. It's just an awesome opportunity for engagement. Item eight, finance facilities and operations. Eight point one, our meeting minutes from June 2nd. Brad?
Yes, our meeting date was June 2nd. We met at 5 o'clock. Members present were myself, MacFarlane, Phil Rose, Penny Miller Nelson, Brian Bruton, Anna Womack.
Oh, thanks. And no guests were present. We met here at the administration building. We discussed the April financials. We're reviewed with the committee. Variances from year to year were discussed. Audio, video, equipment repair and replacement. Administration will propose the repair and replacement of audio visual equipment and conference rooms A through D as well as the boardroom, which you'll hear more about later today. 3D printer purchase for high school CTE programs. Administration will propose the purchase of 3D printers for high school CTE programs, which you will also hear later today. HH Dow High School portable press box. Administration will propose the purchase of a portable press box for HH Dow High School from gifted funds. Workers' compensation renewal. Administration will propose renewing the workers' compensation contract for an additional year. Property and casualty insurance renewal. Administration will propose renewing the property and casualty insurance contract for an additional year. Budget adoption protocol. Administration reminded the committee of action items taken at the June board meeting related to the 24, 25, and 25, 26 budgets. Robotics facility. The committee discussed the possible robotics facility. July FFO meeting. The committee decided to cancel the planned July FFO meeting due to its proximity to a holiday. A meeting may, may be scheduled, if needed, based on the facility planning process. Facilities improvement bond proposal discussion. The committee discussed the May proposal and possible next steps. Meeting adjourned at 7:00 PM.
Thanks, Brad. All right. Move into a series of actions here. So eight point two for action, the 25, 26 salary letter. Anna?
Included in your board packet tonight is our proposed 25, 26 salary letter. This includes salary rates for every single affiliated or bargaining group within the Midland Public Schools as well as our non-affiliated groups. Their salaries were reflected in the 25, 26 budget in which you just adopted, and we are looking for your official approval of those rates this evening. Again, some of these are contractually obligated and others are for our non-affiliated groups. And this will officially put those rates into effect for the 25, 26 school year.
Thank you. Take a motion for item eight point two, the 25, 26 salary letter?
I'll move to approve the, uh, item eight point two, the 25, 26 salary letter.
Support.
Motion by McFarlane, support by Horowitz. Any discussion or questions on eight two? All in favor of approving eight point two, the 25, 26 salary letter, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eight point three for action, approval of the summer tax rate. Anna?
Included in your board packet is a resolution asking for the city of Midland to assess half of the full rates that you saw in the presentation earlier this evening. It will ask for an assessment of nine of the 18 non-homestead mills, 0.2008 of the 0.4016 hold harmless mills, and 1.475 of the 2.95 bond mills on the summer tax collection. We are asking for your support this evening of a resolution to ask the city of Midland to approve those summer tax rates.
Thanks, Anna. I have a motion for eight three?
I'll move for the approval of item eight point three, the summer tax rates.
Support.
Motion by McFarlane, support by Ringold. Any discussion on eight three? Yes. Um, just as a reminder for the public, this splits the city residents' taxes in half. It's not any increase or decrease. Um, Jen, can you do roll call, please?
President Roush.
Yes.
Vice President McFarlane.
Yes.
Secretary Ringold is a yes. Member Blazy.
Yes.
Member Craig?
Yes.
Member Horowitz?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item eight point four for action, workers' compensation insurance renewal. Anna?
Administration recommends renewing its workers' compensation coverage policy with the Yider Insurance Agency of Midland, Michigan. This is the fifth renewal of the policy and the renewal rate for the 25, 26 coverage is $129,210.
Thank you, Anna. I have a motion for eight point four?
I'll move for the approval of item eight point four.
Support.
Motion by McFarlane, support by Craig. Any discussion?
How often do we put this out to bid?
Tends to be every three to five years, I think.
We tend to go every three to five years, yes.
All in favor of approving item eight point four, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item, sorry. Did I say eight four? Did I say eight five? Eight four, okay. We are on eight five. For action, property and casualty insurance renewal. Anna?
Administration recommends renewing property and casualty insurance coverage with SETSEC of East Lansing, Michigan for a total cost of $399,711. Current coverage expires on June 30th, 2025, and this amount is for coverage through July 1st, 2026. This is the fifth renewal of the policy and details of coverage are provided in the board packet.
Thanks, Anna. Do I have an approve, do I have a motion for approving eight five?
Move to approve property and casualty insurance renewal with SETSEC.
Support.
Motion by Ringold, support by Horowitz. Any discussion? All in favor of approving item eight point five, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight six for action, gifts totaling $36,250. Anna?
We have one item tonight totaling $36,250 that will require your acceptance on behalf of the board this evening. This item is a donation from the HH Dow High Sports Boosters for the purchase of a portable press box. We would request that you approve accepting this gift this evening.
Is there a motion to accept eight six? I make a motion to accept eight six of the gift?
Support.
Motion by Blazy, support by McFarlane. Any further discussion? Questions?
Very generous.
Yes.
Thank you. It's, um, it's much needed at Dow.
Great. Thank you to our boosters. All in favor of accepting the gift as outlined in eight six, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Item eight point seven for action, audio, video, equipment repair and replacement. Anna?
Administration recommends approving a purchase order to AVI Systems of Wixah, Michigan for $165,065.44 for the repair and replacement of the AV equipment and conference rooms A through D as well as the boardroom. This essential project addresses the increasingly frequent failures of our current AV equipment, which is approximately 10 years old and will significantly enhance the reliability of and functionality of these critical meeting spaces. Pricing for this project was secured through the REMC bid, ensuring compliance with board purchasing policy. This project will be paid with bond series three funds made possible due to bond savings realized from the recent telecommunications project.
Thanks, Anna. Any motion for item eight point seven?
I'll move for the approval of, um, item eight point seven.
Support.
Motion by McFarlane, support by Ringold. Any discussion on eight seven?
I have a couple of questions, um, in no particular order. Um, but I guess what was the basis for this request? How, like, are we doing a lot of Zoom meetings wherein we need this to work all the time? Is it so that individuals sitting at home can see the board meetings? I guess what's kind of the, the driving force behind this? Because it is a lot of money.
Sure. Um, I'm going to take the first part of that and then I'm going to turn it over to Dave for some more specifics. Um, this room, as many of you are in here right now, you see it just as a boardroom. Uh, we use these conference rooms on a daily basis for all sorts of different groups. We are starting to have our wall panels fail when we are doing presentations within here with our new teacher orientations, when we are training, uh, staff on how to use technology. It's essential to be able to have these things work. Um, so the board and board meetings at home would benefit from that, but the space is used much more than once a month just for boards. And I will turn it over to Dave for some further explanation there.
So this will, like it said, this will replace the equipment that's up to 10 years old that runs, um, all the time. It's, it's used in multiple meetings, large meetings, trainings. Um, we have started having failures with the equipment you've heard during the board meetings where we have frequent audio failures. Um, this is going to address those. This is going to move the equipment that's in the back corner back there that's so loud that some of the audience can't hear. It's going to take that and move it into a new space and get it out of here so that there's better sound quality in here, both for our meetings and this meeting. Um, it is also going to address these monitors on the floor and get rid of the trip hazard that these monitors present. We've been lucky so far that nothing's happened, but it will get these out of the way as well. So it's going to address quite a few different issues that we have in here.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't spending $165,000 to make board meetings better.
Yeah.
Any other discussion or questions? I think that the, the one thing I would say is it will make a better viewing experience for people at home to make sure that they can see and, and hear, uh, everything that's said in the board meeting.
I'll just also offer that we've received comments from folks who are here in person that it is at times incredibly hard. I mean, I feel a little awkward leaning in, but I received feedback from folks who said, if you don't lean into your mic, we can't hear what's being said when we're in the same room. So it will improve that part of the experience as well.
All right. Uh, all in favor of approving item eight point seven, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight point eight for action, 3D printer purchase for high school CTE programs. Anna?
Administration recommends approving a purchase order to CDWG of Vernon Hills, Illinois for $48,730.50 for 15 Bamboo Lab X1 Carbon Pro 3D printers. This purchase will replace the aging and well-used printers in the two CTE labs for the past eight years. Pricing for this project was secured through the REMC bid, ensuring compliance with board purchasing policy. This project will be paid with STEM grant funds.
Thanks, Anna. Do I have a motion to approve item eight point eight?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by McFarlane, support by Horowitz. Any discussion or questions?
Just to note that they're super cool. Like, they, they, I mean, we had the video on our social media of the bike seat that was 3D printed by our engineering students, right? Like, this is a critical program that we offer to, um, our CTE programs. And I just think it's really cool that they're getting an upgrade.
I'll also say that I was really impressed with the work that the administration team did on really being thoughtful about replacing only what they needed, making sure that they had spare parts and consolidating printers to specific buildings to try and minimize the expenditures. So, and to see how many times a day they're used, it's, it's really cool how engaged the students are. Um, all in favor of approving item eight point eight, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, item eight point nine for action, Dow High, Dow High School portable press box purchase. Anna?
Administration recommends approving a purchase order to Aluminum Athletic Equipment Company of Royersford, Pennsylvania for $36,250 for a portable press box for HH Dow High School. Pricing for this project was secured through obtaining three quotes, ensuring compliance with board purchasing policy. This project will be paid with the gifted funds approved earlier this evening.
Thanks, Anna. Do I have a motion for item eight point nine?
I make a motion to approve item eight point nine, portable press box with the gifted funds. Support.
Motion by Blazy, support by McFarlane. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of approving the purchase of the press box in item eight point nine, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Eight, 10, um, for information, gifts totaling $18,754.87. Anna?
The total amount of gifts listed for information only tonight is $18,754.87. These gifts this evening represent support for programs ranging from support for various sports teams at both HH Dow High School and Midland High School, Midland High's art program, supporting a CTE culinary student to attend a national competition, support of robotics teams at HH Dow High, Jefferson, and Northeast, and more. As is tradition, all donors are going to be recognized in the credits of this evening's broadcast and also through board correspondence upon your behalf. We are grateful for our community's support of our students and our programs.
Thank you, Anna. And thank you to all of our generous community partners. Item nine, human resources. Um, we did not have a meeting since we, since our last board meeting, so there are no meeting minutes. Moving to, for information, staff retirements. Brian?
Thank you. Um, we'd like to announce the retirements of the employees from the following groups. First, the paraprofessionals. Paula Young Anderson, who is a paraprofessional at the pre-primary center, will be retiring, um, at the end of this year, as well as Karen Welser will be retiring from service at Midland High School. And from the administrative ranks, Eric Albright has announced his retirement effective at the end of June from Midland High School.
Thank you, Brian, and thank you to those staff members for the years of dedication to the district. You want to move into nine, nine point two?
Thank you. Um, on behalf of the Midland Public Schools Administrative Staff Board, we would also like to extend our deepest sympathies to the following families. To the family of Gary Eastman, who passed on May 15th of 2025. Gary began his career with MPS in 2002 and was a dedicated bus driver for 23 years of service. Also to the family of Robert Peterson, who passed on May of the 18th, 2025. Robert began his career with MPS in 1970, worked as a custodian at HH Dow High School and Central Intermediate School during his employment. Robert retired in 1996 with 26 years of service. And finally to the family of Barbara Volk, who passed on May 18th. Barbara began her career with MPS in 1973 as a speech pathologist. She provided those services at Adams, Cook, Eastlawn, Parkdale, and also Sugna Elementarys, and also Jefferson Middle School as well during her tenure. Barbara retired in 1998 with 25 years of service, but continued as a substitute for speech pathology for several years after.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Item 10, correspondence, uh, from the Board of Education to the following individuals or entities as listed in your agenda packet. Item 11, our scheduled activities for information, regularly scheduled meetings throughout the end of the school year with the next one being July 21st. Item 12, study session discussion. Are there any points of clarifications from any of the board members? If not, I will turn the floor over to Penny.
Thanks. Just a couple of quick comments. Our summer learning program is underway, elementary, middle, and high school. I asked Ken today. Uh, we don't have the exact list in front of us, but, but we know we have hundreds of students engaged in summer learning. These are students who were identified based on learning needs, and the learning model varies from elementary, middle, to high school. And as you all know from previous board presentations, we do analyze that data at the end of the, the summer experience and work to continue supporting those students into the school year. the school year. I'd like to take a moment just to maybe brag about our admin team a little bit. We talk a lot about how much we love teachers and the great work they do. Our admin team is right alongside them. Four days they've spent already since the last day of school engaged in learning. We had two days of ALICE training, which is our school safety protocol. These are preparing us should we have violent, critical incidents that we need to respond to, sharpening our skills and preparing us to enhance the training for our teachers and paraprofessionals and others. So, it's important for me that you all know that we have not taken our focus off the importance of school safety, and will continue to ensure that we're prepared, both preventative and prepared should something happen. The other two days of learning were really to sharpen our leadership skills. It was a combination of learning more about universal design for learning, which is how we can improve our tier-one instruction, that foundation for all students of our multi-tiered system of support. We also dug into some school-level data, and teams had a chance to analyze that. And then we really focused on what the framing was, was focused leadership. And Jen, to your point, it was quite a bit about how to lead through change, how we help move people even when they might be resistant to following the research and the evidence to continue building our practice. And I think what I'm most proud of is we have a team led by this team here, a team of administrators who are working to lead by example. They are absolutely learning leaders, and that's what we want for all of our team members. I did previously share with you all that, as a follow-up to the last board meeting, we had a parent, a Plymouth parent, come express some concerns. Not only did I connect with Erica shortly, well, right after the board meeting, we had a follow-up phone call, and then I met with her, as well as Margaret Doan, the principal at Plymouth, to hear her concerns, ensure that her concerns were resolved. I don't always, at the subsequent board meeting, share with you how some of those matters were handled, and I will work to do better at that so you know that those concerns don't go unnoticed and unattended to. Also, working to connect with some of the folks who offered public comment, just to hear more, to your point, Phil, about their specific questions, concerns, and ideas around facility planning. You shared our shared sentiment about next steps, so I will move past that part and just close out by sharing that we are moving forward with the FAST ICE property purchase, with the intention of that being, in part, our robotics facility. We know that there are other opportunities to use that facility to support student learning and growth and all kinds of great things. We will be developing a plan for that. Just to ensure that we're sharing this publicly, we did complete the full assessment necessary, the environmental assessment. We followed the required process for that. We heard just this morning that we are in good shape to proceed with that, and our attorney is helping us move forward with all of those required documents that will eventually be submitted to the state, to Eagle, to ensure that we're fully compliant, including the Duke Care compliance plan. And we are on track. I'm looking just for confirmation that we are on track for that closing date of June 30, if not before. I'll remind you all that you entrusted Phil and I with the responsibility of completing this process. We do have an amendment to the purchase agreement. That amendment is really twofold. It's to clarify the closing date of June 30 and to note the price reduction. We requested a price reduction, and we landed at $20,000 less the initial selling price because of some of the information we learned through that facility assessment. So, with that, Phil and I will sign that amendment, and we'll be looking forward to that closing date. I'll keep you all informed if anything else happens along the way. Other than that, it's summer. I hope you all are doing things that bring you joy and are restorative and restful, and we'll see you all in July.
Thanks, Penny.
One thing. Pick one thing that's restful, restorative, yes.
Item 13, adjournment. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.